Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 17 meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. If you are able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Our allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would our clerk please call the roll of council?
Councilmember Dish?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Malach?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Iyer?
Here.
Councilmember Ackman?
Here.
Councilmember Briggs?
Here.
Councilmember Cornell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a motion, please, to approve the agenda. Moved by Councilmember Briggs, seconded by Councilmember Iyer. Discussion of the agenda. I'd like for members of the public to observe that on the agenda you will note that Public Hearing Number Five and DS One and DS Two, that is to say, the Brownfield Plan and the Development Agreement with respect to the Arbor South Project, all these items have been removed from our agenda. As folks know, this is a particularly complex endeavor with lots of moving parts and lots of considerations and one with respect to which the city is not generally accustomed. As a result, some concerns have been expressed by councilmembers and others, and there are modifications to the proposal being contemplated. That is the reason for its removal from the agenda. Further discussion of the agenda. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. Do we have communications today from our city administrator?
No, ma'am.
We have an update from the Downtown Development Authority. Come on down.
And then when you get to your last slide, it'll just shut down itself and place it down, and you're all set.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. I don't know if it'll come up on the screen.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. So tonight, I wanted to use my time to give you an update on our downtown activity trends. The last time I did this was March of 2024 with 2023 data, so tonight I'll be sharing 2024 data. So the data I'm sharing is from Placer AI. Placer uses cellphone data and a proprietary algorithm to estimate foot traffic in our downtown within our DDA district. They then categorize that foot traffic into three types of visits. So there are visitor visits, resident visits, and employee visits. Recently, Placer has done an update to their algorithm, and we are still working with them to understand resident visits. So tonight, I'm only sharing visitor visits and employee visits because we want to have a really good handle in understanding those resident visits before we share them. So we'll start with annual and monthly visits. So the bar chart is annual visits. The blue bar is 2019, that's our pre-pandemic visit levels. The red bar, 2023, and then the green is 2024. And you can see that 2024, we have exceeded pre-pandemic visit levels. Shifting to monthly visits, there's a lot going on in that graph, but I'll draw your attention to the yellow bar. That's 2025 data. Those are visits from January through September, and you can see that in 2025, we have exceeded that same period from 2024 just slightly, by about 1.6% or 260,000 visits. So we're trending in the right direction. On daily activity, red bar, 2023, green bars are 2024. We are exceeding 2024 every day of the week. Monday through Thursday, that increases a little bit higher. Those are due to employee visits, and we are assuming that is because we have employers who are maybe making some changes to their work-from-home policies. Hourly activity, post-pandemic, activity has shifted toward the evening. Visitor and employee visits during the daytime are down, and our evening activity is going up, particularly later in the evening. Visit trends. We share this graph to show how closely our downtown activity is tied to U of M's schedule and calendar. So beginning in January, you can see that January through May, we have significant activity downtown. Come May, when classes end, we see a significant dip in our activity, May all the way through to August. We do have art fair giving us a really needed bump in the middle of the summer. August comes, students come back, and we get our activity levels going back up with some great bumps with home games and U of M Parents Weekend. I won't go through all of these events, I just wanted to highlight a few. If you go down to the middle of the slide, you'll see holiday shopping events. That's actually one day. That's Kindle Fest and Midnight Madness, the first Friday in December. And you can see that in 2024, that Friday was 53% higher than other Fridays, a typical Friday in November or December. So that holiday shopping event, those two events, are really important for our downtown. Hash Bash is another event that we've always known from the parking side, is a very busy day downtown. We see that through our parking numbers. And now that we have this visitor data, we can confirm that this year, in 2025, the Saturday of Hash Bash was 25% higher than a typical Saturday in April. The Zach Bryan concert was great for downtown visitation. It was like a really good home football game. And with those Morgan Wallen concerts coming in July, I'm not sure how he compares in popularity to Zach Bryan, but having those concerts in the summer will be really good for our downtown businesses. And then U of M Parents Weekend 2025, this year, just that Saturday, not the entire weekend, just that Saturday, was 31% higher than a typical home game. So Parents Weekend really brings a lot of activity to our downtown. And then to switch gears, I just want to briefly talk about our bike counters. We sometimes get the question, does anyone use the downtown bikeway? I am here to tell you that yes, people are using our bikeway, and we know that because we have counters along each of the four legs of that bikeway. So these counters count pedestrians along the sidewalk and bikes in the bike lane. They do not count scooters. For 2024, we had over 318,000 bikes counted. Temperature precipitation and U of M schedule all affect use along the bikeway. Our peak months, not a surprise, are September and October, and our busiest bikeway is William Street. So taking those 318,000 visits, you get a weekday average of a little over 900 counts a day. And to put that in perspective, the main road parking structure has capacity for 799 cars. So we're not suggesting that every count represents somebody that would have parked within our parking system, but we do know that each count does represent a trip that wasn't taken in somebody's private vehicle. And then finally, just a quick development plan update. I think I mentioned this last time I was here, the DDA Board did approve the draft plan to pass on to council back in September. We are working really hard to try to get you the first step in that statutory process at your December 15 meeting. That's yet to be seen. If we're able to do that, you would then be setting a public hearing and kicking off that statutory process, which would bring us to April for your final consideration of our plan. So our fingers are crossed, we're hoping that we can get there in December. And I'll just note that one particular item in that plan, we believe, is critical, and that's establishing the downtown service team. We're not going to wait in terms of getting prepared to get that service team in place. So we issued an RFP the first week in November, and we intend to have things ready to go, should you approve our plan, and get that team off the ground as soon as we can. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now come to public comment reserve time. Public comment reserve time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment reserve time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers in all instances will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our first speaker today is Robert Malcolm, Sr.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Robert Malcolm, Sr. I'm a resident of the Fifth Ward, Ann Arbor. I am a 50-year member of Labor's Local 499 and a lifetime resident of Ann Arbor. I come for you today representing members of Labor's Local 499 who live and work in the city, to urge you to support the Arbor South Development Project. This project will create hundreds of jobs for members of the Labor's and hundreds more for the allied tradespeople. Total number of tradespeople working on this project will number near 1,000. Individual over the length of the project, there are middle-class supporting careers that are critical to ensure Ann Arbor has a diversified economy and a strong construction base. Our members, just like many residents of our community, are struggling with affordability. This project is not only a job creator, but the project will add many housing units to our community. We need more housing of all types, and with this project slated to add 200 units of affordable housing, it is a step in the right direction. Working-class people are dependent on all of you to deliver housing desperately. Need to keep people in our community. We can't let a perfect be the enemy of the good. In summary, I urge this body to approve the needed items to allow for construction of Arbor South. The jobs, the housing, the realization of the portion of the city will bring so much good to our community. Please keep working on this issue to build better and brighter Ann Arbor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Low.
Mayor Alex Low is on Zoom. Alex Low, go ahead.
Good evening. This is Alex Low calling in from Pittsfield Boulevard. Sorry that I didn't manage to be there in person. Work went over today, so barely managed to join the meeting virtually. Want to speak to you tonight about DS Two. I also have comments about DS One, but I'll address those in the public hearing about DS One. And I hope that when we have that public hearing, you'll keep people on topic, as I have already seen some misinformation going out today about that public hearing and its application to DS Two. I am strongly in support of more housing. I think that everyone on council is well enough familiar with me to know that I am constantly saying, please build this, please build this, please build this. But just this once, I would say at least about DS Two, please don't do this. DS Two is a poison pill that may well cause Arbor South to not only be less than perfect, as people have said, but in fact, in the long term, suppress more housing in Ann Arbor. This is dangerous. We need housing that works with transit, not against it. And we certainly do not need city bonds to the tune of $166 million to build yet more parking structures in an area that is already overparked. The whole structure of DS Two seems to essentially put the risk onto the city while the profits don't go anywhere near the city and remain in private hands. I feel like this is a case where if the city were to actually go through with this, some of the conspiracy theorists who regularly bemoan city council
30 seconds.
would actually have some reasonable ammo, and that I don't want. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Ivanich.
Mr. Ivanich is also joining us on Zoom. Eric Ivanich, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Eric Ivan Sitch, calling from the Third Ward to speak to item DS Two, the financing surrounding the Arbor South development. There's genuinely a lot to appreciate about this project. It has many promising elements, and I'm grateful for the effort that has gone into it so far. However, in its current form, I found myself unable to support it. First, here's what I think is strong about the project. The state Eisenhower area is perfectly positioned to evolve into our city's second downtown. It has land ready to reuse and reinvestment, and I deeply appreciate council's earlier work to establish transit corridor zoning here. That groundwork matters. The project also replaces surface parking and a gas station with retail space and much-needed homes, 20% of it being affordable housing. Along with the redevelopment happening on Briarwood, this could spark even more positive transformation in the surrounding area. I also want to underscore how valuable public-private partnerships and brownfield tax increment financing are as tools for our city. They help us guide redevelopment in ways that meet both our present and our future needs. It's unfortunate that a few very loud voices are spreading misinformation about these tools and about city administration and city councilmembers who are working to employ them for a collective benefit. We need clarity and good faith conversations. Additionally, redevelopment doesn't simply happen without developers. They're easy targets for those who wish to stall progress, and they have been the focus of much negativity here and surrounding our conversations on the comprehensive land use plan. Please, let's consider that our very own homes, myself, my own home included, would not exist without developers. Yet, with all that said, I cannot support the project as it's currently structured. My main concern is the expectation that the city would pay for, own, operate, and maintain three new parking structures that serve primarily, if not exclusively, this private development. That places significant risk on the public while relieving the developer of responsibilities that should remain theirs. It creates a moral hazard that I don't believe we can justify. If we are going to engage in public investment to support this project, it should be toward infrastructure that benefits the entire district, transit, water, sewer, non-motorized mobility, and long-term area-wide improvements. And with an active rail line less than 1,000 feet from this site, the opportunity to connect this area to downtown is tantalizing.
30 seconds.
I want to acknowledge the tremendous work that has already gone into this proposal. My hope is that city staff, the developer, and all of city council can work constructively and positively together to reshape the project in something that meets our shared goals, something we can all support wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Griswold.
Today, a friend shared a TikTok with me. I don't usually go to TikTok because it's just too much to do. Anyway, it was in a video game format, and it was instructions on how to safely cross the street at a crosswalk. And there was a little guy, and he came out, he looked right, he looked left, he looked right, he made eye contact with the driver, he started out, he gave a thumbs up, and he crossed the street. Then there were a few examples of how not to cross the street. Unfortunately, every time the little guy went to cross and didn't do it right, wham, the vehicle hit him, and he went flying in the air, which was really hilarious, because this was down in Nashville. Now, this wouldn't be funny in Ann Arbor, because we have so many pedestrians hit by cars. It's just not funny. So anyways, look at TikTok if you want. On a more serious note, I want to express sincere gratitude to the many community members, advocates, city staff who have contributed to the significant improvements in Ann Arbor's pedestrian infrastructure over the past two decades. Sometimes I forget about all the progress that we've made. And some of these improvements have been enhanced crosswalk markings, improved lighting, and especially the adoption of the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, the RRFBs. Another example is the crosswalk near Huron High School on Huron Parkway. And while this and other improvements in school zones are commendable, we must also remember the tragic loss of a student in 2016, which served as a catalyst for these changes. This underscores the importance of proactive rather than reactive safety measures. I'm just going to skip over the rest of what I had planned to say, because I wanted to say something positive, but we are at a tipping point, and that tipping point is the two-way cycle track on Miller Avenue. And when that happens, and someone is critically injured or dies after it was recommended that it not be implemented, I would expect a resignation from everyone sitting here, because there is absolutely no reason for denying the need for sightlines. Sightlines are an engineering standard. Unless we can bend light, we need sightlines. And we have ignored them. It is aspirational, and someone is going to die in that two-way cycle track within the first year. And when they do, please resign. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pwan Bailey.
Hello, how y'all doing today? So I know other people came in with concerns, just based on the building and employment and things of that, but I more so want to talk to you guys about a personal issue more so, not, I mean, for me, but like personal per se. So like, I've seen you at the Juneteenth celebration and a few more things that my kids have received awards at, and I've overheard the Ann Arbor Police, the Pittsfield Police, as well as Sheriff Dyer saying that you guys or they are no longer doing certain practices as far as like police stops and things of that nature. So I want to see if I will be able to get some literature on that to see how the people that have been affected by this, like as far as like myself. So like, I'm a 40-year-old male, black male, been living in Ann Arbor for the past 23 years. Since I've been 19 years old, since I first came to Ann Arbor, I've been getting stopped by the police like several times a month, to the point where I'm getting tickets to where it's over my head, to where it's affecting like my family. So like, I haven't been stopped by Ann Arbor Police in maybe like three years, but all the rest of the agencies, from University Police, Eastern Michigan Police, everybody in the county, because like I fit the description wherever it is I'm going, that's how I feel, and that's what's been happening. And I'm like, it's 125,000 people in Ann Arbor. About 6% of the people are, 6% of the population in Ann Arbor is black, so that's about 6,000, 7,000 people or so. And I'm just like, how is it that I continue to be stopped from graduation of high school to 41 years old? I'm a father, I've been living here, I have 10 beautiful children that I have raised here in Ann Arbor. No government housing, no Section Eight voucher, no any of that. I've been a working man for the entire time I've been here. So for me to continue to have to go through this, or I'm having tickets, or I've spent like $246,000 since 2002 on traffic tickets, fines, driver responsibility fees, and things of that nature regarding traffic stops in Washtenaw County alone. So like this right here affects the livelihood of my family. So I understand I may not look like a lot of some people, I may not have the accolades, like I even had to drop out of college, simply because I had too many traffic stops, to the point I'm going to jail in the middle of my semester, like as a student. So like, I understand I may look like whatever the case may be, but like when I get stopped or whatever, say, you don't find anything in the car, I get loaded with all these tickets. So if I'm getting four or five tickets per traffic stop, and then I'm going to court, I'm getting put in a situation where I'm on a hamster wheel. I'm 41 years old, I have 10 children, three of those children I have wheeled to college. I have three children in college right now. I still have seven more children that I'm raising here in Ann Arbor. I'm a single father, and like I said, like I don't use any of the government or anything of that nature. I've been working since I've been a child, so I'm asking you, the council, like what may be in place for people that have been affected by that.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abu Bakr Ibrahim.
Please press star six to raise your hand. Mayor, I do not see this caller online.
Our next speaker is Blaine Coleman.
Thank you. For 22 years, we have been demanding a resolution in the Ann Arbor City Council against military aid to Israel. In 2003, we were here again, demanding action against Israel. Rachel Corey was murdered by Israel that year, a young woman killed by an Israeli bulldozer. Do you remember her? In 2018, we were here when Israel was physically shooting down thousands of human rights marchers in Gaza, unarmed human rights marchers in Gaza, shot down by Israel. Tens, tens of thousands wounded, hundreds killed by Israel, unarmed Palestinians in Gaza. Since this genocide that Israel has been committing in Gaza, starting in October of 2023 and continuing until today, Israel has killed officially 69,000 Palestinians. Unofficially, there are probably hundreds of thousands buried under rubble in alleys and God knows where. One of those hundreds of thousands was this little tiny girl, Hind Rajab. Israel shot 335 rounds into the vehicle this little girl was sitting in, whimpering, trying to get help on her phone. And we have that audio, and you will see it in a movie in a month or so in theaters here called Voice of Hind Rajab. This is one, this little tiny girl was one of the possibly hundreds of thousands of Palestinians killed by Israel in this genocide. So we're asking again, we're asking again for the city council to approve a resolution that simply says, we are against military aid to Israel. Ann Arbor Councilmember Aisha Gazi Edwin has signed a letter saying, yeah, it's a genocide, and yeah, we should stop arming Israel. Ann Arbor officials, such as Carrie Rhengans, have signed their name to a resolution in the Michigan Legislature, saying basically, yeah, it's a genocide, and yeah, we should stop. basically, "Yeah, it's a genocide, and yeah, we should stop arming Israel." Other Ann Arbor and Washtenaw County officials have signed letters and resolutions saying, "This is a genocide." Why aren't you approving the resolution against military aid to Israel? Why?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mozgan Savaby Asafani.
Hello, Ann Arbor. I'm here again to say that we must cut off military aid to Israel. And this mayor and this whole of the city council must stop blocking this resolution after 22 years. Yesterday, I was in a seminar about health in Gaza, and I learned about Dr. Adnan Al Shur, who was raped to death by Israeli military. Dr. Adnan Al Bursh, who was raped until he died by Israeli military. Now, I know that people in this town do not support rape to death. I know this town does not support this genocide. However, those who have found their ways into positions of power, including our mayor and city council members, appear to have no regard for what this public needs. I am sure we can all agree. You cannot be a public servant if you do not serve the public. That is actually the case here in Ann Arbor. For 10 years, they have been talking about affordable housing, and they have not remedied this situation. While we get hundreds and thousands of apartments going up in Ann Arbor, we do not have enough housing, affordable housing, to offer to our citizens. As the high rises go up, so do the line of people waiting for affordable housing. Why is that? We're not against developers. We are against developers who only line their own pockets and leave the public in a ditch. We are against when we have to pay for the profit of the developers, and we end up without homes and homeless. So as you can see, Ann Arbor, this city council and this mayor are not serving us. We need to do what New York did. What did they do? They kicked out Mr. Andrew Cuomo, $22 million in his support. They kicked him out, and they chose Mr. Mamdani, Zuhran Mamdani, with $22 million against him, still won and kicked out a big Zionist, Mr. Cuomo. We can do the same here. Our mayor only got $90,000 last time, not 22 million. We can remove him from his seat, because he obviously is not helping the public. We can remove him. We can remove members of this city council and replace them with those who will fight for the public instead of giving excuses why they can't.
Thank you.
So please force this city council to cut off military aid to Israel.
Thank you.
And also come and let's kick them out. Thank you, Ann Arbor.
Thank you. Are there communications today from council? Councilmember Dish.
I didn't want to go first, because I was hoping somebody else would give some details, but I will go first. So I was looking forward to voting yes tonight on the public-private agreement and the brownfield plan for Arbor South. That's a proposed new development that will bring much-needed housing to Ann Arbor, both income-qualified, affordable, and market-rate on the state and Eisenhower Transit Corridor. This is the first real project with the potential to realize the policy vision of the city's 2021 Transit Corridor Zoning Initiative, which we all call TC1. So as you know, this Transit Corridor Zoning Initiative seeks to provide incentives to create new mixed-use housing development on transit corridors that are located at the periphery of our city. And there's a reason why these areas hold unrealized potential for residential and retail development. Currently, they are mostly given over to service parking lots. They have not benefited from the history of public infrastructure investment that supports our densely populated mixed-use downtown. So to realize Arbor South, the developer will invest over $400 million, and brownfield tax incentive financing will be used to provide approximately $346 million in public monies. Yes, this money will be spent in part, not in full, to build three parking structures that our financial analyst tells us are necessary to realize the project. The project is doing what the city anticipated for its Transit Corridor Initiative. It is a mixed-use development to be built on top of service parking lots that currently provide 1,500 spaces for people who work there. The three parking structures would provide 200, no, 2,476 vehicle spaces. If you're listening and counting, that means adding just 1,000 new spaces to serve 1,000 new units of housing, 209 of which are permanently affordable, and to serve 100,000 square feet of new retail. The need for parking structures to replace surface parking, it doesn't, I think it's easy to see. And I know there are concerns about the city owning, operating, and maintaining these parking structures, but it is the only financially feasible way to work it, that these structures be provided by the city and therefore not be taxed at a rate that makes this development unrealizable. The reimbursement, so the structures will be paid for through TIF reimbursement. This does not tie up new tax revenue. It uses tax revenue that would not exist at all without the new development. And that is what reimburses the cost of creating the value that creates, that generates the new tax revenue. The parking structures are the first cost to be reimbursed in the brownfield plan. They are designated Priority One.
Councilmember?
Yes. You should know that that just means they're first to be reimbursed, not the first to be created.
Further communication from council? Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everyone who came out to the premiere of A Ripple in Ann Arbor and the Truth and Reconciliation Program that followed. Your presence, engagement, and reflections made a great deal. I especially want to thank filmmaker Aliyah Mitchell, who told this story with clarity, respect, and a deep sense of responsibility to the community. I am also deeply grateful to the community members who agreed to be interviewed for the film. In particular, I would like to acknowledge Blair Shelton, whose willingness to share his story was significant and deeply appreciated. Thank you as well to the mayor and chief Andre Anderson for participating in the panel discussion and for offering an apology that acknowledged the harm of Ann Arbor's DNA dragnet. For anyone who's not, who was not able to attend, the documentary is now available through the Ann Arbor District Library at aadl.org/a rippleinannarbor. Thank you.
Are there other, further communication from council? Councilmember Briggs.
Just a couple of things I wanted to point residents to. On our Engage website, there are a number of areas where folks can provide public feedback. One is the Right Sizing. Should have up in front of me, the Ann Arbor Roadway Right Sizing Project. Thank you. Which gives people the opportunity to visit our major arterials via survey, provide thoughts on where they think safety could be improved, and document kind of by putting, yeah, putting a little pin on a map, some of the problem locations. So I encourage folks to take that survey and identify some of the known safety risks on these corridors. Also, I've been receiving a fair amount of inquiries from residents around Seventh and Miller and those projects. And do you want folks to know that Councilmember Cornell and I have been in communication with staff? They're certainly recognizing the communications and progress. Kind of project sequencing wasn't as ideal as might have been hoped. There's going to be a little bit of reflection on this after we get through these projects. Miller is due to be reopened for traffic on the 22nd. So I know that many will be excited about that.
Councilmember Ghazi Edwin.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I just want to say a little, a little bit about SNAP benefits. And we know that people are really struggling right now. There have been, you know, recent cuts, and there's also funding that is in limbo. And there's anticipation that we may see the highest rates of hunger among individuals and families since the Great Depression. And that includes 30,000 residents in Washington County alone who potentially could lose access to SNAP benefits. I want to share that last week, I visited Community Action Network, which is a local Ward III organization. It's also the largest food pantry distributor in the county. And last week alone, they provided 700 individuals with food. And many of them reported that they received maybe part of their benefits for the month, and that they're really, really struggling. I want to encourage folks to take advantage of Food Gatherer's Food Distribution Site, which is at Briarwood Mall. They'll be distributing food again on November 19th from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. in the southwest corner of the parking lot to reach out to resources like barrier busters if they're having difficulty with paying their utility bills. And in addition, I've also heard from residents about whether our city would consider doing something like putting a temporary moratorium on fees and fines for water and sewer, which other cities have done, such as Celine. It is something that I have looked into with staff. I'm happy to report that fortunately, our city does not charge late fees on water or sewer bills. In fact, we do incentivize customers and residents to pay their bills earlier. You can go on a payment plan for them as well. You can find more information at a2.gov.org backslash services backslash paying my water bill. And in the meantime, I am working with city staff to see if there may be other ways that we could help support people during this difficult time. Thank you.
Further communication from council? I'd like to request confirmation of the following appointment. That was presented to council on November 6, 2025, to the Local Officers Compensation Commission, Brian Weinert; to the Employees Retirement Assistant Board of Trustees, K.C. Walbridge. You have a motion, please move by. Councilmember Cornell seconded by Councilmember Redina. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. I would also like to recommend the following. Ma'am. I would also like to recommend the following nomination for your consideration to the Renters Commission, Sheila Rizzoli. We have before us the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the Consent Agenda? Move by, Councilmember Ackman seconded by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion of the Consent Agenda. Councilmember Dish.
I'd like to pull CA8.
We're the discussion of the Consent Agenda. All in favor? All opposed? The Consent Agenda, with the exception of CA8, is approved, thus satisfying the eight vote, with 11 council members present, all voting the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement with respect to CA6. CA8, Resolution to exercise a right of first refusal to purchase and resell the affordable unit at 105 Ashley Muse and appropriate funds. Move by, Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Discussion, please, of CA8. Councilmember Dish.
Yeah, I would, staff has generously agreed to help us out on this item. I was hoping for some clarification of the affordable covenant terms on this property, a little clarification of how it is that the city comes to be buying the unit back, and any insight that's possible regarding the, the general timeline that we, that the city has to undertake to investigate and bring units with these kinds of covenants into compliance.
Ms. Vargas is available on Zoom to answer questions. Thank you. She'll be joining us.
Councilmember Dish, can you see and hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can. Thank you, Attorney Vargas.
Thank you. Sorry for the delay, but I did hear your questions, and I will address them as best I can. So I believe you had first asked for a little bit of more information about these covenant requirements. So there are eight units in Ashley Muse that are set aside as affordable. They are owner-occupied units, and so each one of them has a restrictive covenant that is recorded. And so the main terms of these covenants are that they're sold at a restricted price to ensure that they remain affordable, that anyone who purchases them needs to be income-qualified. So any eligible purchaser would need to meet an income threshold of 80% AMI or lower in order to be eligible. And it also requires that these unit owners use these homes as their primary residence. So pursuant to the covenant, the city does have the enforcement rights for these covenants. So when there is noncompliance, we will receive a referral from the Office of Community and Economic Development, which is the entity that sort of oversees these covenants and the compliance on behalf of the city, so that our office can perform an investigation. So we were referred several of these units at Ashley Muse earlier this year to look into, investigate for potential noncompliance with the primary residency requirement. We performed an investigation. We have reached out to owners. This unit at 105 was one of the units that we have been investigating. And we did determine that the owner was no longer using the unit as their primary residence. So we have been in contact with this owner. And we do believe that the most efficient way to get this unit back into the hands of an affordable unit owner is for the city to go ahead and make the purchase and then resell it to an income-eligible purchaser. So I think you also asked about some of the timeline and maybe difficulty of enforcing on these units. And so I will just say again, there are three units that the city has been looking into. They vary in terms of the difficulty, but it has been a time-intensive endeavor for our office to investigate these units, determine whether there is credible evidence of noncompliance, locate these owners wherever they may be. They may be not in the city anymore, not in the state anymore, and then negotiate with them to cooperate and sell this back to the city so that we can regain compliance.
Thank you very much.
I know if there's anything I could not answer.
No, that was excellent. Thank you very much. I just wanted everyone to understand how this comes to be on the consent agenda and the difficulties that restrictive covenants may pose from an enforcement perspective.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved with 11 council members present, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement. We now come to a set of public hearings. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to council and the community about the specific subject matter of the public hearing. To speak at a public hearing, you need not have signed up in advance, but your speech must relate to the specific subject of the public hearing. That is to say, the specific item on the agenda to which the public hearing relates. Speakers in all instances will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. I will just remind folks that public hearing number five, with respect to the Arbor South Brownfield Project, has been canceled, has been pulled, because the related item on the agenda has also been pulled. Public hearing number one, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55 Unified Development Code, rezoning of one acre from TWP Township to R1A, single-family dwelling, Thai zoning, 1155 Arlington Boulevard. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Good evening, council. My name is Jeff Hayner from Ward 1. I'm glad to see you're all here. Often you're not, you know. I think we know that this, this body has probably the worst attendance record I've been able to dig up historically. The clerk could correct me on that, but. The clerk could correct me on that, but I think it's probably the most absenteeism since forever, including the cholera epidemic of 1866. Okay, that being said, when you all voted to approve this agenda, which include public hearing number one here, you all agreed to the violation of Open Meetings Act from striking the public hearing number five. You have to give 18 hours' notice. Now, public hearing number one is on a rezoning. And we all know that when there's a rezoning happening, if you were to strike this public hearing with the casual attitude that you did public hearing number five and DS2, it'd be a lot of trouble. And I think the attorney would agree with me that you can't just go striking public hearings. This item, PH1 in front of us here, it's a typical thing. It's pretty rote. Yes, the other one wasn't. It's very atypical that we would do those things. In this case, there's no reason to strike this, and you would be in trouble with the OMA if you did. Okay? And so I'm going to suggest that you hold the hearing because I've heard people who were here.
Your speech must relate to the subject matter of this public hearing, not other public hearings.
Well, then I'm done with this one. I have another one for the next one, the ones that you are holding tonight.
Thank you, sir.
But I've just given you notice that OMA complaint is being filed.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, we don't have any callers online for this hearing. Oh, I do.
Thank you.
Alex Low, go ahead.
Evening. I just wanted to say that I support this, but I hope that the residents don't build a secret second floor into their house without getting the proper permits. Thank you.
Mayor, we don't have any other callers online for this hearing.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55, zoning, rezoning of 5.7 acres from TWP Township to R4A multifamily dwelling district, the Village of Ann Arbor 32600 Pontiac Trail. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
And I'm kind of here on behalf of a couple dozen Arrowood folks who are concerned about this project generally. Now, it says Village of Ann Arbor 3 because they've had, the developers had to split this into phases because they didn't have the rights for all this. And this 5.7 acres is essentially a natural state right now, as are all the other properties. This is part of a 75-acre parcel that is the, or aggregated parcel, that is the largest remaining undeveloped parcel in the city. And, you know, looking at, like, Councilwoman Dish from Ward One here was going off about how awesome the public-private partnership was going to be to build some parking structures. Well, we spent millions on a geothermal project for the Bryant neighborhood to retrofit the Bryant neighborhood. This Village of Ann Arbor is wholly unbuilt, wholly, and we seem to love giving away our leverage over development in our community. The easiest time to do geothermal and combine geothermal fields and make all these improvements that we're spending millions to do in the Bryant community is before the foundations are built and before the land is graded. And so this Village of Ann Arbor, with all due respect to the developers for bringing housing to our community, is not, not all housing is the same. I know that the bootlickers who'd like to call in would say housing is housing, but not all the housing is the same. We could get a much better project out of this, and I'm sure, I have no doubt, that the developer is going to sit on this, waiting the outcome of this comprehensive land use plan. So it's unfortunate that we're going to just R4A this because that's what they ask for, so it ties in with their plan, when we could hang on to that little bit of leverage and say, we want something better than this. We want combined geothermal fields. We want green development. We don't want any development. Not all housing is the same. And by just giving them this, you're just saying, all housing's the same to us, to you. Not to me, not to the people in Arrowood, but it seems to be to you. So consider that. Why are we, why don't we do a public-private partnership with this developer and throw in a couple million to get all the geothermal that we want? It'd be a lot less than what we're paying for Bryant, and it would be 10 times the amount of houses being touched by that goodness. So just make those considerations, please.
Thank you. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Hey, Adam Juskevich here from the Fourth Ward. We're in a housing crisis, and it's essential that we build more housing in Ann Arbor. I support this development, and I'd like to see it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, we do have a caller online. Alex Low, do you have a comment?
Hi, just wanted to say that I support this. I do wish that the city were doing more to support this. And I would like to also back up what the first person speaking said about not all housing is the same. He's absolutely correct. Some of it is legally permitted, legally built, and some of it contains an illegal second floor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we don't have any other callers with their hands up online.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number three, an ordinance to amend Sections 5.16.3.F of Chapter 55 Unified Development Code, Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
So I saw the, I saw a staff report that said we're down to 21 dispensaries right now here in the city. I think that was accurate. And we think we had 29 at some point. And as we all, or maybe you don't know, the state is making big changes right now to the marijuana rules around recreational marijuana. And if they go with the relationship of a community's population to the number of allowed businesses, it's going to give us almost exactly what we had at the start. It's going to give us 29 to 30, depending on how you count our population. And so removing this buffer, I'm not, I'm not sure we're really hot on upping up the marijuana business in our community. I mean, I don't, wouldn't have a problem getting marijuana if I wanted to. I mean, there's a couple places I can almost point from the decks here. So removing this school buffer is a little odd. I think there's a reason it's there. I know, I also, I'm sure that many people wish we could remove the billboards on the highways and the giant banner that's in violation of our ordinance up at Cloud that says that marijuana's for everyone. Of course, it isn't. So I'm not a big, big, big fan of, I like the school buffer, and I like kind of reasonable limits on the amount of businesses. Now, the state's talking about one marijuana dispensary for every 5,000 residents, and currently, they allow one liquor license for every 1,500 residents. So that gives you a sense of how they care about, you know, the well-being of our community. They don't. And so I don't have much to say. It seems like every time, other than that, every time that we come up here, there's not a lot of discussion at the table. The rules, the council rules, really consider that deliberations are supposed to happen at this table in front of the public. Typically, what we get is people reading a statement or just sort of, oh, yes or no, and not saying too much about it. I'd be interested to hear you think, to hear what you have to say about how many marijuana businesses you do want in our community, and if you think that competition is good for the consumer, either by price or product availability or what, because we know monopolies don't, don't do so well. Monopolies turn out to drive prices up, right? And, and so I'm just interested, I'd like to see you discuss something at this table. And if it's marijuana, well, so be it, you know? That's all. It's interesting. I'm not going to stick around too long. PH4, same thing. Chapter 40, at least we're finally doing something about it. I think it's about time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Alex Low, do you have a comment?
Hi, I just wanted to say that I support this. I wouldn't know where to get marijuana in the city, not that I'm looking for it. But I do think that whatever buffer requirement we have for, you know, marijuana, for alcohol, et cetera, from schools should also be applied to the very large, heavy machinery that is highly polluting that we seem to have just swarming all over our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we don't have any other callers online.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number four, an ordinance to amend Chapter 40 Trees and Other Vegetation of Title III Parks and Public Grounds of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, we don't have any callers online for this hearing.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. A1, we have before us the regular meeting minutes of November 6, 2025. May I have a motion, please, to approve these minutes? Move by councilmember Watson, second by councilmember Gossie Edwin. Discussion, please, of the minutes. All in favor? All opposed? The minutes are approved. B1, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55 Unified Development Code, rezoning of one acre from TWP Township to R1A, single-family dwelling, tie zoning 1155 Arlington Boulevard. Move by. Councilmember Watson, second by councilmember Malik. Discussion, please, of B1. Councilmember Dish.
This is a straightforward rezoning of a one-acre parcel whose annexation was approved by the state on June 3, 2025. The properties within city boundaries, municipal water, and sanitary sewer are available. I will be saying yes.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It's approved. B2, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55, rezoning of 5.7 acres from TWP to R4A multifamily dwelling district, the Village of Title, pardon me, the Village of Ann Arbor 32600 Pontiac Trail. Move by. Councilmember Dish, second by councilmember Harrison. Discussion, please, of B2. Councilmember Dish.
As we have received a petition on this item, and we've heard some public comment that imagines that something new is happening here tonight, I would ask staff to clarify what is happening with this item on our agenda?
Mr. Leonard is on Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So 2600 Pontiac Trail is a rezoning, shockingly, on Pontiac Trail. This was actually previously annexed as part of a development petition for a project called the Village of Ann Arbor. Typically, when these come to your dais for consideration, they come in a phased approach. First, you consider the annexation that is sent to the state. Once the state approves the annexation, then we come back for the zoning. In this case, you rezoned the site previously to R4A, but due to my error, we omitted a legal description as part of that original ordinance. So this cleans up that rezoning, designating this parcel to match the surrounding parcels of R4A. There's no proposed change to development on this site at this time. There was an email that was sent that prescribed that this was previously a city park of some sort. This has always been under private ownership and is, will continue. However, as part of the proposed development that was previously approved, it is primarily remaining as open space. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. So the Ann Arbor villages, or Village of Ann Arbor, we're still waiting for because there's complications with Eagle, is that right?
Yeah, they're, they have, again, we have approved a plan. They are, I think, going through some scenario planning to figure out the best way to address any needed remediation on that site. I do think that they are considering some minor modifications to the site, but they have not, but the review of those have not been completed at this time.
Yep, so this is, I'm sorry.
And again, I don't anticipate significant changes to this particular parcel as part of that.
And this project is bringing us about 600 units of housing. And back when that project was working its way through staff, the developer offered to electrify a significant portion of that project. Geothermal was discussed, but because this project is, in fact, repurposing and sitting adjacent to an old municipal dump, it's not the best site for that kind of heating and cooling?
Yeah. Minimizing disturbance of some of that soil to some extent, I'm not an environmental engineer, so I don't want to get too far, but I think that that definitely was a consideration. Addition, just as a reminder, there are a couple other attributes of that project that included a new connection to Leslie Park from the west, as well as some assistance to improve the potential improvements at the significant intersections around that site.
Thank you very much. Okay, so.
Councilmember?
I'm going to vote yes.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. B3, an ordinance to amend Section 5.16.3.F of Chapter 55 Unified Development Code, Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Move by. Councilmember Briggs, second by councilmember Cornell. Discussion, please, of B3. Councilmember Briggs.
Thanks. Since some folks may have missed the discussion that happened at first reading, I just wanted to update on that. I am supportive of moving forward with this, but the memo that's posted on Legstar doesn't necessarily reflect what are the changes that we made at first reading. So a little bit of background, this is not about the number of marijuana retail locations. This is about the buffer between marijuana businesses and K-12 schools. We've had a couple of retail locations that were, because of regulatory changes at the state level, were going to no longer get their licenses. And so we were forced to kind of revisit our buffer and determine if that still made sense. Planning Commission essentially came back to us with a recommendation that it was, they thought that through a different process, that they could remove that, and it would be reviewed and considered through the special exception use process. What we did at first reading was to ensure that no retail, no business would pop up sort of adjacent to a school. So we put in a minimum 100-foot buffer so that it didn't, a business didn't, you know, wasn't considered, didn't consider a location immediately adjacent or across from a school. So that sort of situation is, won't be entertained in the future, but certainly we will be considering through the special exception use process whether further distances will be, would be warranted.
Further discussion? Councilmember Redina.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also just wanted to respond briefly to something we heard during the public hearing about kind of the potential that we may not be aware of, changes that might be coming at the state level. We've actually talked extensively about this already at our policy committee meeting, which is the committee meeting that meets regularly to talk about things that are happening at the legislative level. at the legislative level and the state legislative level, and really relates to the city's position in that, in that regard. We're very aware of potential changes that may limit some of the uses or the, the number of businesses that could exist here in Ann Arbor, and we're also very aware of the potential financial impact that that may have on us. Obviously, we have been spending our marijuana excise tax revenue for really important priorities here in the city, including eviction prevention through Rising Hope for Housing program. So we are absolutely very aware of the changes that are happening, and we'll continue to advocate for the city to get the maximum number of state revenue sharing so that we can continue to invest in these important community priorities.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. B4, an ordinance to amend Chapter 40 Trees and Other Vegetation of Title III Parks and Grounds, Parks and Public Grounds of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion, please, of B4. Councilmember Ackman.
Thank you, Mayor. So this had second reading, I think, or it was to have second reading the last meeting. That was postponed because transportation staff asked us to use CARE in enacting this, that we make sure that sightlines are, that we're clear about the restrictions around sightlines and corners. And so changes have been made to this, and I would like to move to amend with those changes that I think Ms. Bodri can distribute electronically, but they're also at your seat in a paper copy. So as you look at the ordinance, the blue changes were the original changes to the current ordinance, and the red changes are the changes that are being suggested in the amendment. Do I need a second?
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Can you perhaps, for the public, describe the purpose?
Sure. So the purpose of the, of this ordinance, this is Chapter 40, it relates to trees and other vegetation. We focused our changes only, and I want to emphasize this because I've gotten some questions from community members, we're focusing the changes right now just on people's private property, so up to the sidewalk. This does not have any impact on changes in the lawn extension or easement, as you might call it, though changes are probably needed there in the future, but we are not dealing with those now. So all of these deal with that. So the changes in the amendment basically specify that, that the city, that city staff are able to use the ASHTO standard, and I don't know off the top of my head what that stands for, but it is a transportation-oriented group, that it allows them to set a sight triangle that is different, perhaps greater than the 40 by 40 that's described in the original changes. And that is because that sight triangle and safety around it, and basically this is about having clear lines of sight, depends on the speed of, the prevailing speed of the road. And so on higher-speed roads, you need a bigger sight triangle than you do on residential streets. The other change that is in this amendment is that we, instead of using a qualitative description about being able to see through that sight triangle, people on bikes, people walking, now it sets a height limit of 30 inches. Those are the key changes. Please correct me if I got any of that wrong. Okay.
Are those changes friendly to the body? Is that amendment friendly to the body?
So I believe, I believe what this does is it kicks it back to first reading. This is not the first reading, right? Maybe you could walk us through.
That's right. John Reiser, Assistant City Attorney. It would render this first reading tonight, and it would be scheduled for a second reading at a future meeting, likely the next one, as well as another public hearing.
Of the main motion is amended. All in favor? All opposed? Do you want to roll a vote? It is approved. DC 1 Resolution to appoint Wayne Powell to the Airport Advisory Committee as a non-registered elector. Moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Redina. Discussion, please, of DC 1. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved with 11 council members present, thus satisfying the seven-vote requirement. Do we have the pleasure of a closed session today?
No, thank you, Mayor.
We have before us the clerk's report of communications, petitions, and referrals. May I have a motion, please, to approve the clerk's report? Moved by Councilmember Gauzy Edmond, seconded by Councilmember Redina. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. Are there communications today from our city attorney?
No, thank you, Mayor.
May I have a motion to adjourn? Please, moved by, rather, in the absence of public comment overflow, may I have a motion to adjourn? Please, moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Iyer. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Were adjourned.